All right. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Yep. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, January 27th, 2020 Tuolton City Council Meeting. Tonight, we'll start off with a pledge of allegiance, and be led by Bridgette Brooks. I'm sorry, my Valerie Pratt. I'm still stuck in last time, last meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we're starting off with announcements, then we have the recognition of the student artist from Sagert Sidewalk Project, Megan.
Hi, Mayor Pumple. Can you hear me? Is it on?
Doesn't look like it.
There it goes. Woo. I'm Megan. My name is Megan George. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager for the City of Tuolton. I'm here tonight to introduce a few student artists that have recently participated in a sidewalk art project as part of our Tuolton Moving Forward Bond. So I just have a few slides because I wanted to give you a glimpse of what you might see if you happen to stroll along Sagert Street out by at Volodyt Park. So the two up here were made by Arturo Villasenor and Demian David James. The one on the left is called Doves, and the one on the right is called Mastodons. Next slide has got Sun and Moon by Allison Crainer and Sugar School by Maya Payne. So I'll invite two of the artists up to the front in a little bit, but wanted to show you what the process looks like because it involves quite a few different departments within the city, and it's pretty interesting ultimately. So the first picture you see is what the original art looked like. This is Maya's. Maya's in the audience today. And then the next picture, we took that and we put it into a computer program that connects with our Makerspace technology, and they were able to, they had to shift some of the lines, make them broader, because ultimately what they do is they put it in the CNC machine, right here also pictured, and it cuts away the negative space. So it essentially does the opposite of a 3D printer. And so we have this in our library currently. It is one of the pieces of technology that will eventually make up our Makerspace. So this next one, so this is the print. This is essentially what was created. So that's, it drills away at the pieces of plastic, and you'll see it right here. We'll have them hold it up in a little bit. But this one was fairly large, so they had to do it in two parts, and then we stapled some wood on the back of it in order to make it a print. And then, of course, you'll see the artwork in the sidewalk itself. So we began soliciting for art last winter, and we received art in a few different pieces. So three were submitted by students, two from Tuolton High School, one from Bridgeport Elementary. We also solicited art from professional artists in this larger community, and we received, that was the Doves by Arturo Villasenor. The Tuolton Arts Advisory Committee and the Diversity Task Force reviewed all of the submissions. This project was centered on the community. We wanted it to represent the community, which is why these art pieces were selected. So we are also in the process of soliciting art right now. We have a whole list of projects that'll be coming up over the next couple of years as part of the Tuolton Moving Forward Bond. So we are asking for people, both young and old and in between, to submit their own artwork for consideration. The Tuolton Arts Advisory Committee has met last week to develop criteria for evaluation, and they will be reviewing all of the submissions in March. So we have flyers that Betsy is going to pass out in a little bit, both in Spanish and English, that we'd like for you to take and share with your own networks, because we're really excited to have as much art from the community as possible. So I'd like to invite Demian and Maya up here.
Don't be shy. Come on up.
So Maya, this one is yours. Demian, this one is yours. So do either of you want to share a little bit about your piece with the council, or does the council have any questions for them?
Yeah, can you tell us a little bit about what each thing is? You gotta come up to the mic. Come on, take a seat, get comfortable, chill out.
I was trying to draw one of the mammoths because we were learning about mammoths during school at that time.
Nice.
And mine is Sugar School, and I basically, mine was for school, too, and I basically found a picture of Sugar School and made my own idea of what one looked like.
Wow. Those are terrific. Can you flip it around? The mastodon? All right. Yeah. Questions, comments? Yeah, because Bridgette's on the Arts Committee.
I'm on the Arts Committee, so I just wanted to congratulate you both. There were a lot of submissions, and they were really great submissions, and to be chosen is really, I have to say that the people that sit on our Arts Committee are really talented artists and have really fine eye. So they're awards, some of them are award-winning national artists that we have sitting on our Arts Committee. So for them to choose your pieces, I was there for that process. It was, they were, everyone was delighted with all the submissions, and then there's votes by all the people on the Arts Committee. So we've never, I've never met you before, but I really appreciate your submission and your talent and trying out something new and sharing it, and now you get to share it with the whole community as we walk on our streets. So thank you so much. Great job.
Terrific job. Have you visited your piece of concrete lately? Checking out it every day? Cool. Anyone else? Well, thanks again for all your work on this. It's terrific. I mean, you're leading the charge here, and you're the first couple pieces that are built be out there. Now everyone's got to meet you, you know, you're standing, which is pretty high.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Yeah, come on up, have a picture with the council.
Do you guys want to grab these and then go up and stand by the council, and we'll grab a couple pictures?
Slide in together. You come on up here.
Come right up here.
You guys want to be in front.
Yeah, we want to be able to see the artwork. Is it really heavy? It's beautiful. You guys did a great job.
Art.
Well done. Well done.
All right. Now we're moving on to public comment, and assistant comment is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the city council regarding any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, this would be an appropriate time. I have two signups, but you don't have to be signed up. I'll take the first two signups, and then it's open to the floor for anyone else who'd like to address the council. The first sign up I have is Mark Peterson. Welcome.
Test, test. My name is Mark Peterson. I've been a Tuolton resident for more than 22 years, Oregon resident for more than 30 years, and I'm currently retired with a background in electrical engineering and management. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight for your time. So the reason I'm here is I viewed the city council minutes and meetings for both the working session from October 28th, when you guys were discussing the cannabis regulations. I think one difference here is that I'm not an anti-cannabis person, as same time, I am not financially, I'm not, I don't have any financial interest in the cannabis industry. So I'm a, I don't know if I'll say a normal citizen, how about a regular citizen who's willing to speak out in favor of retail sales in the city of Tuolton. I've heard people get involved after retirement, and I guess here I am, so. So my view is that the current citing regulations, and I think you guys do recognize this from the previous working session, effectively bar any medical or recreational sales in any, except for a very remote part of the city that's actually zoned industrial. So I urge the council here to update the regulations to allow regulated retail sales of medical and recreational cannabis in commercially zoned areas of Tuolton where they belong. Of course, there's financial benefits to the city for this, but I really think the most important aspect is the regulated, responsible adult sales and use of cannabis. Not unlike alcohol or tobacco sales, which are much more prevalent in the city. Legal sales and use is a damper on the black market for cannabis, and the black market has no issue selling cannabis to anybody, including those under 21. So quickly, the council has more than four years of legal recreational sales in Oregon to like learn from, and there's many cities around us that you can model and shape any updated regulations. Just like alcohol, tobacco, video games, black market drugs, cannabis can be misused. It can be abused in a detrimental way. However, after five-plus years of legal sales and use in states that have legalized cannabis, you know, there's always a few issues, but there hasn't been any, you know, serious major issues. In fact, I've read that some studies included that binge drinking is actually down in states that have legalized cannabis, and that use by underage people are also down in those states. Leave it to the, you know, take everything with a grain of salt that you learn. Education of responsibly used by cannabis retailers is a key part of successful legislation and legalization, and I think cannabis retailers are good about educating people. Just in closing, I urge the council to update our current regulations to medical and recreational sales and commercial areas of the city. Allow one or two, allowing one or two recreational sales entities seems appropriate for about our size. That's my time. I thought it would be quicker.
You can just wrap it up.
Yep. And however, I defer the details to the council, of course. Thank you for your time and opportunity to address this issue.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next sign up I have is Western Oregon Dispensary, I think, right?
Apologies for the illegibility there. It's associated with doctors, but sometimes lawyers have bad handwriting, too. My name is Anthony Stewart. I do represent Western Oregon Dispensary. I'd like to start by thanking you all for the discussion tonight. It's the first real discussion I've seen in the exact sessions. I know it's been around for quite a long time. It's been revisited and revisited, and I appreciate the thoughtful discussion that those for and against have really put together tonight. It's much appreciated. I did want to address one thing that Mr. Morrison had said regarding Tuolton Together, and it appears that some of you, or at least one of you, perceived that they were improperly grouped, all the people who originally spoke out, and if there was any offense taken, that wasn't intentional. I was told by a number that the community had been guided by Tuolton Together, but there wasn't an intention to really cast a wide net. It was simply to say that some of the arguments being made were really not properly placed before this committee. I think those statements were made by a number of you tonight, and I appreciate you really focusing on that. As all of you recognized, the majority of people in Tuolton voted to approve cannabis, and we understand that there's a little bit of a disagreement as to the nature of how the final Plan Text Amendment came into effect, but it essentially created a regulatory taking. It prevents people from being in business in reasonable places where businesses should be located. There are four or five members here today, based upon the discussions at the executive session, that acknowledge that a revisit here is appropriate. It's something that we've been pushing for as an organization on behalf of Western Oregon Dispensary. I've been pushing since 2018. We started meeting with the city, trying to think of a thoughtful way of how we could begin the educational process and move this towards a revisit now, four and five years after the original Plan Text Amendment was put into place. I do want to specify that this, the reduction of the buffers is part of a two-part request, and they really go hand in hand, and it's both a reduction in the expansive 3,000-foot buffers to reflect a little bit closer adherence to where everybody else in the state is from a reasonableness perspective, as well as acknowledging that inherent into the, in the OLCC licensing process, there are three different types: processing, wholesaling, and production, or the growing of marijuana that are naturally in industrial locations. If you're in a city, it's great. I prefer it if it's out in the countryside, because that's where that stuff should happen, or in zones further from cities. But a marijuana retailer, implicit in the word retailer is retail, which occurs in retail zones or commercial zones. And so what we would, I would like to remind you guys is that the reduction of the buffers goes hand in hand with an acknowledgement that there should be a different approach with regards to dispensaries. These are retail facilities, as we've acknowledged ad nauseam today. Security is so down on the lowest rungs of issues for OLCC when it comes to marijuana. They regularly outpace alcohol, minor decoy checks, happy to provide the county, excuse me, the city, with that information. But this is a group of professionals. We are now four years in. The people that are surviving the most turbulent new capitalistic market, I'll bring my remarks to a close, are those who are professionals. The people that were the amateurs, the people that broke the rules, the people that sold to kids, the people that tried to hide money, the people that did the things that we as a state, as a citizenry, have decided to do, they've fallen by the wayside. OLCC is not anything but as strict as they can be, and they've gone out of their way to make sure that the security issues and the community standards issues with regards to children's access are nowhere near what they were both five years ago and even where they were two years ago. So that is important to keep in mind. So I'd like to remind you, the buffers and a designation that essentially allows retailers to exist, if the buffers are otherwise met, in a central or CG commercial zone, we believe is the most reasonable and rational change that we'd ask for, and we are gracious and grateful for all your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? You don't have to be signed up. Linda, nothing? All right. That moves us on to the consent agenda. Those items on the consent agenda are considered routine and adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like one of them removed or heard separately tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of Item One, consideration of approval of the regular meeting minutes of December 9th, 2019, and a work session in regular minutes of January 13th, 2020, which I seem to be stuck in that day. Item Number Two, consideration of Resolution Number 5480-20, authorizing the city manager to enter into a land transfer agreement with the Tuolton Development Commission. And Item Three, consideration of Resolution Number 5481-20, approving the termination of the Central Urban Renewal District and Central Urban Renewal District Plan and adopting the final report.
Move to accept the consent agenda as read?
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda at read. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to public hearing. Item Number One, consideration of Resolution Number 5482-20, adopting findings in support of a special procurement and authorizing the city manager to enter into a direct negotiation contract with Barney &amp; Worth, Inc. for services for the Tuolton Moving Forward Bond Program. And Megan's back for noncore.
Hi, again, I can tell that the microphone is on now. Hi, Mayor and Council. My name is Megan George. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager for the City of Tuolton. I'm here today for the consideration of Resolution Number 5482-20, adopting findings in support of a special procurement, as the mayor already stated. Barney &amp; Worth was hired as part of the Tuolton Moving Forward Bond Program. Before it was a bond program, we hired them initially due to some polling work and various strategic communications. Over time, their scope has expanded, and now they are central to the bond program strategic communications approach for all program-wide activity. We are looking to amend the current personal services agreement for an additional approximate $155,000, which would bring the total amount spent on Barney &amp; Worth up to around $260,000. This contract-specific special procurement is allowed by both state law and the Tuolton Code when certain circumstances are met. In this case, those two circumstances include substantially promoting the public interest, and it's not likely to encourage favoritism. Staff feels in this case that both of those circumstances are met and recommends that this resolution move forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Paul, I got your name right. I'm getting out of that week-long delay.
I will make, I will make a comment. First off, thank you, Megan, for the presentation, but to date, based on all the work that Barney &amp; Worth has done, and I was involved with them before I was on council, and I just want to give them a shout out, that I appreciate all the work that they've been doing and the way that this project has been moving forward, sorry for the pun, and I would hate to see us try to switch, whatever that pun is, I'm too tired. It's been a long weekend. But so, yeah, this is, to me, is when this type of situation is necessary, and especially in light of how valuable they have been to the city in terms of helping us, in particular with the Garden Corner Curves and some of the other more sensitive projects in the area.
Thank you.
Thanks. And the comments, questions, motions?
So just to pipe in, it is a public hearing, so we do have to allow for all of the audience to...
Right. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak in favor of ordinance? Or, Resolution Number 5482-20. No one? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come up and speak against us adopting Resolution 5482-20? All right. Asking for pros and cons from the audience. There being none, I now come back to council for any discussion or proper motion?
So is this a first reading motion, or is this just a resolution?
It's just a resolution.
I move, we approve Resolution 5482-20.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 5482-20. Any discussion on those motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. As I mentioned before, during work session, Item Number One on the public hearings quasi-judicial ordinance, the ordinance Number 1430-20 is being deferred to a city council meeting in the future. There needs to be some more paperwork completed in order for this annexation process to proceed. So now, moving on to general business, is there any, I don't believe there's any presentation or anything, right? Because we're just pushing it off. Okay, thank you. All right. No, I think he heard the word that was, the annexation was pushed forward into the future.
The rest of the councils who are, and I don't know a whole lot about this, other than I happened to be at some meeting with somebody, oh, the Key Leaders Breakfast, sorry, and Roy Rogers had a parking lot discussion with him, and what this involves around it is just literally some minor paperwork regarding right-of-way. And when Washington County became aware of it, there's no roadblock as far as neither, both Chair Harrington and Roy Rogers both expressed positive things. It's just something that can't be done overnight. And so for those of you counselors who weren't aware of it, just kind of a little background, and they expect to have this back in 30 days approximately?
In February sometime.
February. Anyway, so that's the story.
Thanks. Okay, so moving on to general business. Item Number One, consideration of recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. Valerie?
There are four people on the appointments, and one person, Brittany Valley, we hadn't appointed. We have not chosen to appoint her yet. We have not had her. So she's taken off.
And on the, just an update on that. On the packet, Nicole took Brittany off of the agenda today, and so it's just three people that are on there, that's out on the web, and she is scheduled for February 3rd to interview with you.
All right. Questions for the committee members?
Can we strike the first one?
No.
So go ahead and read, Valerie, read the names that, make your motion and all that good stuff.
Okay, so for the Budget Advisory Committee, we have Monique Beakman, who's reappointed, and Rebecca Deere, who's reappointed. And for the Core Park District Board, we have Jacqueline Hurd.
Questions, comments?
I just want to thank everybody that, we can't, we can't appoint everybody that comes in interviews, so I just want to thank everybody who's willing to volunteer and show up and be a part of committee work. It's so important for our city. I mean, it's invaluable that we have people giving their time for free, as well as contributing what our citizens really want to see happen in our city and our community. So there's so many great volunteer opportunities available in city appointments, committee appointments that come up regularly, so if you applied and didn't make it onto one, please consider volunteering at various places, the library, et cetera, et cetera, and keep your eye open for other committee appointments, which open up regularly. And just, again, thanks to everybody who serves and who desires to serve our city and committees. It's really a pleasure to be on the Appointment Committee.
You gotta make a motion.
I move that we approve the recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments for the three appointments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the three appointees that were put forward by the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. Any discussion on the motions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. All right. We have no items removed from the consent agenda tonight, so we're getting the council communications. We did not have a chance to do council communications during the work session, so we're rolling it into this session, and I'll start on my left this time with Robert.
Thank you.
Changing it up. Surprised them.
So I only have one item. If, I think, sure you'll all remember Jonathan Crane was here a few months ago about a kindness resolution. I've been working on that, and it's really quite a movement. It's taking up and down the West Coast. The City of Eugene's embraced this program, so if you have time to look online, they really done some impressive things. I think what we want, or at least what I'm asking tonight, is if I can get four people or three people to support me in a resolution put on to our general business agenda, the substance of which will be forthcoming, obviously before you're asked to approve it. I see two, three, four. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, Maria? You're up.
I always forget this. And I always press the wrong button, too. No, it was, it's, I did what Bridgette and Valerie talked about the individuals out there that come and want to volunteer. I think that it's really amazing to see the heart of a volunteer, and people really want to serve and be part of this community. I, you know, I'm always amazed about the responses they have when we ask them questions about why they want to join, and I think it's really, for me, it's actually an honor to sit in that committee and see our own people come and tell us what they really want to do. So we had our meeting a couple weeks ago, I think, I can remember, and then we will have another meeting, and we'll see other people come, and encourage everyone out there to keep coming to the, to join and see what's out there to do for our community, and also to come to other events and things that we have in our community. So thank you all.
Thank you. Paul?
So just a couple of things. First, I attended the Key Leaders Breakfast last Wednesday, Thursday, which I'm sure the mayor's going to speak about, because he was up on the, one of the speakers, and I thought it went really, really well, and a lot of the same themes that we've been hearing. One thing that I heard, though, that was near and dear to my heart, although I was a little troubled by a follow-up comment from somebody else, and that is that Chair Harrington said that sidewalks have to be a part of the last mile, which, that's the part that's near and dear to me, and I was happy to see someone from Washington County, especially the chair, say that. However, afterwards, in a discussion with Roy Rogers about roads and taking assignment of roads and having them assist cities with sidewalks that are not improved along county roads, think Graham's Ferry, for example, Roy kind of surprised me by saying, "You can have the road, but we're not making any improvements." So I don't know where we are with respect to the Harrington comment, last mile, we want to have sidewalks, too. You can have the road, but we're not going to pay for them. And hopefully, there's some middle that we can meet in terms of improving some of the areas in our city where we don't have sidewalks. So that was kind of interesting. The second thing was, we had that evening, there was a town hall on vaping hosted by Representative Preuzak, Representative Salinas, and State Senator Wagner. Had a good crowd. It was very informative. Couple of people I talked to after said they learned a lot, and they learned things that they hadn't known before with respect to e-cigarettes and vaping. So that was, it was a very good night. And then finally, I want to mention this because literally yesterday, I was crying. And if you didn't grow up in LA, you do not understand what Kobe meant to Los Angeles. And the way that he passed away, and who was on the plane with him, the baseball coach from Orange Coast Community College, and I know that school very well. I played in community college basketball at another community college there in the I, I played in community college basketball, uh, at another community college there in the area, but we played them, I, I know that area. A high school assistant basketball coach who was helping his tournament team, um, two, two players, his thirteen-year-old daughter and another thirteen-year-old. It's, it's tragic beyond belief, but to Los Angeles, to those of us who grew up there, um, it's the Lakers and the Dodgers, there, that's, that's Los Angeles. And Kobe is, and was, um, the most visible name for a Laker. He was the longest tenured Laker in the history of, of the Laker franchise, which goes all the way back, people don't know this, all the way back to the Minneapolis, um, Lakers before they moved to LA. And so it was, it was just, it's, it's really, it's extremely sad, and, and it's, it's disheartening to see anybody lose their life at that young of an age. But it just, for those of you who are watching the news and in the back of your mind wondering, it's because of what the Lakers meant to, they've been there. They're one of the longest, they and the Dodgers are the two longest franchises in Los Angeles, and they have been true to the city in a way that you can't understand unless you grew up there, so.
Thank you. Valerie?
Well, um, I guess I'll go back to the volunteers, I, I was honored, I got to be invited to a special volunteer brunch on Wednesday, for people that have served in the community, and a gentleman that has been doing things with the Lions Club and other organizations in our community since nineteen seventy-four. And, um, it was just a great thing, and the thing that was interesting is they said that, um, people put in, in our city, it's just so amazing, for fifty-seven thousand hours, which, you know, equates to twenty-seven full-time employees, it's just, it was just such a great thing. So, we really do appreciate your volunteers, and I'm just, just always amazed at how many there are. Um, and then I went to the vaping town hall on Wednesday night, um, I truly had my eyes opened, I had no idea the horrible things the tobacco companies are doing to get these, this next generation addicted to use product, I mean, it's cigarettes all over again, it's even worse, because it's still easy to hide. You're seeing one in four kids are using these things, um, the legislators were talking about, you know, they want to regulate these tobacco, any just, um, or, you know, retailers that sell tobacco just like the, um, liquor stores or whatever, which makes sense, and that, you know, a higher price does keep kids from buying it. But the thing that scared me were there were two young girls with the, um, organization against vaping, and they were saying that a lot of these products, these kids are buying from other kids in school, which begs the question of who's planning to bring them, so it was just very frightening, a problem bigger than I understood that we need to deal with. And then I guess I had to go to the chamber breakfast, my first one, that was really interesting, and it was exciting to see a lot of new, um, businesses there, people. And then we just had our Twelton Community Police Foundation meeting, which I'm really excited that it could really grow, and I'm still Bridgette Sander here, but there's lots of Tony's for sale, so, and I'm supporting.
Sure, you turn your mic off too late.
Call out Megan for posting on the CIO about the city council meeting, I thought that was brilliant, like, my CIO says forty-one percent of households are participating there, so I thought it was a great way to relay information.
Bridgette?
Alright, hi guys, um, well, the first thing I want to say, I brought up healing the divide, that Martin Luther King Junior program that happened, it was the first one of its kind at the library on, um, the anniversary of his birthday, which was January fifteenth. And I wanted to shout out again Chris on the building, um, maintenance staff who put it together with people from the Baha'i community. I have to say that I sat in, we had compassionate discussion, um, program, there was music, there was food, um, there were people, so many wonderful presenters, and, um, a lot of people were in tears, it's amazing to me just being in a room that's compassionate towards people that feel, um, marginalized in different types of ways, especially in the current climate, um, people were just, uh, emotional, um, big tall guys, you know, that do D E I work for a living, um, just every, it was a very heartfelt, uh, experience and really well done. And I sat in a circle with, you know, a person who did interpreting for a, um, a mother and a son that was in my group, adult mother and son, um, from Iran. So, uh, they aren't able to talk about things like that in their country, and to have that perspective here and what we have here, um, it was really poignant. So, uh, I think they're going to plan on trying to do it next year, they also did at Tigard, I understand it was really a good program there as well. And, uh, so I really encourage anyone that's considering, um, doing more of that type of thing in Twelton to check it out next, next year. I also, I'm just going through here, um, I missed the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee this month, I had a memorial to go to, but, um, they are moving forward with the sidewalk project like we heard tonight and some other things, so I just want to thank them for their work. And, um, I also went to a follow-up for the Diversity Equity Inclusion Summit meeting, the multi-city summit meeting that had happened. And so now there, there's a poll out to see the interest of the five cities that came together to do this, who would like to host. Twelton High School came up in the conversation, they'll do a reach out, obviously on their own, but all of the feedback remarks that they got, and considering it was the first time they'd ever done this, um, summit, were so positive, and really what the feedback was mostly was that they wanted more time to spend in community talking about these ideas during the time, so, um, people wanted more that were, that were there, so, so that was positive. I also was at the Chamber of Transportation meeting in the morning, and then that evening, and I'll let the mayor talk about it, but it was really well done, and you did a great job as usual, so we're fortunate to have good leadership talking about transportation, and have all the different levels of government and their perspectives sharing with all different parts of our community here. And then that evening, I went to the, uh, Clackamas County Cities, uh, dinner, and it started with a bus tour, uh, looking at their transportation projects there. They have a, a bike pad trail that was on an old logging road that they're looking at, um, doing, and then there was information about the, uh, needs of the Clackamas County Fairgrounds, which a little part of our city utilizes, and more if we get Stafford done. Then, oh, and then last weekend, uh, I also went to the River Keepers Annual Meeting. The River Keepers are working on a lot of erosion projects advocacy, they're in the middle of an executive director change because of health challenges. So they have someone that was a past board member stepping in right now. I want to thank the former executive director, that project with the storm water drain mural was, really helped facilitate a great partnership with Twelton River Keepers, and there's other projects and ideas that I had from going to that meeting around community engagement, there's environmental workforce, like jobs training for kids, there's just so much that's going on through the Twelton River Keepers, and they're right in our backyard. One of the things that bugged me the most about it was they mentioned a lot of things that they have going on with Tigard, and I feel like Twelton needs to be mentioned a little bit more in the annual meetings, so I have some ideas about that, um, stay tuned. And, uh, one other thing I went to that's not related to city, but just a governmental, um, presentation was, uh, an explanation of some of how the school money is going to be spent and what it's allocated for. Representative Dougherty and another representative, I'm spacing on her name right now, did a really nice talk about, um, the focus of services to our schools. So I'm just grateful that, um, our kids are going to have more, uh, access, especially to some of the things that we know that kids that deal with trauma need, and stuff that's near and dear to my heart as a, as a social worker and a clinician, that I think early interventions and care in vulnerable, uh, kids will help bring more, uh, success with their schools. And when people don't feel safe and they're distracted, it's really hard to learn, so those fundamentals, um, have a big scholastic impact and impact people's, uh, success throughout their whole lives, so, no worries, that's it.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Not too much to share, um, other than I was really happy to see, um, the winners from the Sidewalk Art come this evening. I think they've done beautiful work, and it's great to see it, and I look forward to seeing more examples of that around as we go forward with that program, and looking forward to the retreat work this weekend. That's it.
Alright, I got a little bit of a list here, I got the, I'll do the easy ones first, and I'll save the last two, the heavy ones later. First off, uh, on the fourteenth, I head down to Salem, uh, spent the day in Salem, uh, meeting with representatives and senators, and testifying in front of the Transportation Committee on looking for a million dollars from the state, uh, for a nine-nine W study. Uh, we had quite the contingent go down there, uh, we divided into two teams and hit, uh, what, about, I think, twenty representatives, about fifteen, uh, senators, and then got the full-on committee, uh, about twenty minutes with the committee testifying, uh, myself, um, and Mayor Snyder testified, as well as, uh, Ken Gibson from King City testified to Transportation Committee on the importance of nine-ninew. General feel we got was that it was, it's super important, they realize it, everyone realizes the congestion of nine-nine W, the threats, uh, to pedestrian and bicycle safety in nine-nine W. But the common theme, as we all hear all the time, is, um, you know, we have a billion dollars, uh, of requests, and we only have about three-hundred-and-thirty-three million dollars to allocate in a short session, so everything's going to be super tight as far as allocating dollars out. On the sixteenth, I attended the first Veterans Memorial Committee meeting, uh, to this point they had focus committee meetings. This is the steering committee, uh, put together, uh, by Ross and the Parks folks to focus in on what we've got as far as input from the community so far, and take that and boil it down more for going out to the public. I believe the first public meeting is tomorrow night, uh, to see some of the results of what the steering committee, uh, gathered from the, uh, focus committees. There's some terrific people on these commit, on this committee, uh, we broke into four tables, and our table had some incredible synergy, and the, the array of experience of different wars, different generations, and different viewpoints is, is well represented. So the Parks folks did a terrific job putting that community together. Uh, the twenty-second, went to the, uh, Westside Economic Alliance meeting in the morning, uh, Mark Haas came and made his case for why he should be the next Secretary of State to Westside Economic Alliance and looking for endorsement, uh, but they're not looking at endorsements yet, I don't know if they're going to do one or not, uh, because no other candidates have come to talk to them. Uh, another big subject of discussion is also, as always, transportation and the T-two-zero-twenty initiative with Commissioner Trese being the head, uh, Western Economic Alliance. She has, uh, wears two hats in that meeting, that she can bring the, her viewpoint from her government side and her side of representing businesses and what's going on. Uh, the tier-two quarters we discussed in February at that committee to decide what are they going to do about it, how they're going to fund it, what would they be, um, so that's coming up. On the twenty-third, as was mentioned, I was, uh, privileged to be on the, uh, dais, if you will, or be a speaker at the Transportation Forum put on by the Ch- Tiger Chamber of Commerce, um, had pretty good turnout, I would like to see some of our bigger employers there, but, what did I say, Tigard? Oh my god, I'm getting tired too, Paul, the Twelton, uh, Twelton, uh, Chamber of Commerce, yeah, yeah, thanks for listening. Someone's listening, right? Yeah, um, some of the bigger employers, the bigger, uh, road users would be nice, but they're probably busy, and usually they've got something to say, they know who to talk to in the city government, uh, and don't need to go through the chamber, but some really good questions, uh, Representative Prusak caught a bug and was not able to come. Uh, they modeled her town, uh, meeting idea, and it went very well, as everyone was saying, and look forward to seeing what happens here at the short session. Uh, then went to the Canby Dinner, was interesting to see the, not never thought of, that the Clackamas County Fairgrounds are almost at capacity of what they can do over the year. Uh, their calendar's so full, and based on their facilities, that they don't have much left, so they put together a committee that said, how can we rethink the fairgrounds and grow into the future, and their committee did an astounding job of what they need to do to fairgrounds. Now they just need to find forty-six million dollars, to make it happen. Uh, they broke this out in phases, and the first phase is to redo the main building and make it a multi-event facility, so they could have multiple events during the day at the same time, which would increase their revenue. Whereas the last thing they would do, uh, is hit the rodeo area, uh, when the rodeo comes in for that time of year for the county fair, they sell out every weekend. So they're just trying to figure out how to increase their revenue streams, update and modernize their facilities, because there's still a big demand. Tomorrow night, I can't attend the, uh, public meeting for the, um, Veterans Memorial, because it's Tigard, uh, State of the City, and Jason Snyder ripped off my idea a couple of years ago, and he's doing it again, doing his talk show style, so I'm going to go see what he's doing this year, maybe razz him, I don't know. Then JPAC met, uh, a week or so ago, what was interesting there, um, is they were coming out with a new set of design standards for roadways and infrastructure, and they published it on the website, and they reviewed some of the things that they're going to require in order to get metro grants. So it's something you might want to look at, is their new design standards. Uh, some of those standards didn't sit well with us in the audience, our, the smaller city representatives, I should say, where the streets looked like downtown Portland with the red bus lanes, all that good stuff that might not work in our city, but, uh, we'll see what we'll have to do in order to get metro funds. The one that really, uh, got me going personally was Trimest's presentation on their tunnel idea. They're looking for fifty million dollars worth of funding, uh, from the Transportation Twenty-Twoty Bond Measure to study putting a tunnel, a tunnel under the river to replace the steel bridge, the steel bridge is a choke point for them, getting the trains over, and it's going to be a bottleneck going into the future, and, uh, one of the ideas is to tunnel under the laminate, and it would increase the amount of trains that can get through, cut down travel times, lots of positive things. But right now, for a three-and-a-half mile tunnel, they're projecting one billion dollars a mile. A mile, so this is, you're looking at three-and-a-half million, billion-dollar project. Fifty million to study it, which JPAC seemed pretty good okay with, and JPAC seems okay with three-and-a-half billion dollars. And again, my personal opinion, not the council's, I'm sitting here going, we're fighting like hell to get the Bridgeport line here for a billion dollars. And they're talking about three-and-a-half billion for three-and-a-half miles under the river, which I understand that the, the, the bridge, they have valid points at the bridge, can't handle it. But are there other alternatives, maybe, they're a little less money, so more to come with that, uh, what else? That's it for the light things, if you will. So I sent an email about Tiny Wolf Brewing, did everyone get a chance to review that email? Tiny Wolf Brewing is a very small brewery up on nine-nw, uh, by, uh, Side Pole Road, and they'd like to have a food cart come in on weekends, serve pizza. When we did the food cart ordinance, the food ordinance, we never envisioned probably nine-nine W, the impacts up there, we're so focused on downtown core and our manufacturing industrial, but never really thought about nine-nine W, that we do have spots up there. So, a couple emails went back and forth, we trained myself, uh, Councilor Kellogg, Sherilyn and Aquila, and we came up with the idea, or actually Aquila and Sherilyn and Robert came up with the idea of, can we do an amendment to the ordinance that will allow, uh, food carts in the general commercial area that directly about nine-nine W? So I sent you that email, I emailed Linda Mulholt at the Chamber, and I emailed the, uh, Central CIO, um, Executive Committee, and both came back favorable. They're like, sure, we're fine with that. They're like, sure, we're fine with that. In fact, Linda Mulholt said, more the better for food out there because when PGE moves in and other development come out, comes out there further down Tuolton Shore Road and there, 124th, we're going to have more demand for food services, dry cleaners, all that further outside our downtown core. So both business agencies or both business advocacy groups were in favor. So my ask tonight is, if you read the email or if you have any questions, let's do it now. Can we direct staff to bring forth or start the process of amending our ordinance for the food carts so that we can make that change for general commercial when it abuts 99W?
Yes.
Paul?
Yeah. My first comment is I thought that it was legal to be in that area. And so my second comment is, can we at least first have a work session on what, I don't know what the timing is. And I don't want to delay this forever because obviously, you know, if it's something that we can do. But I'd like to see then what the rules are because I read that email. I was under the impression that we banned it in the common areas and then it included a small area beyond Fred Meyer. So we excluded, we made an exclusionary for that, but that it was allowed in other parts of the, so I was, I'm at a loss as to why it's not allowed out on 99, which is about as far away from the common areas as you can possibly get.
Right. I think the, I don't know if Aquila wants to address it now or you just want to put it in a work session. Long story short, I think because it's in general commercial, where you only allowed like the mobile push carts because we're thinking more of Bridgeport and we weren't thinking 99W out on our, you know, northern edge. Or not narrow than. Sherilyn. So what, does anyone else have? Okay.
I mean, Aquila and I would put our heads together and talk about process, but I would expect that we would bring it to a work session and look at the existing food cart ordinance, where it's allowed, where it's not, kind of the, the feedback that you guys got originally we would outreach to and just make sure that the folks that were interested in it at the time would have notice of the conversation. And then you guys could give direction to bring back revision to the ordinance.
Sound good?
Have you by chance, Kathy Holland, at the time, president of the, I think she still is president of the C I C. Have you reached out to her and has she responded yet? Because she was up to her neck in this issue back then. So I would be curious as to, I would definitely want input from her before.
She says, Frank, as long as the food cart is not in Central, we are good. We're also recommending they be allowed on non-paved areas outside Central. Understood the requirement was from clean water. We want an exemption for food carts on unapproved lots. Didn't happen. Good luck, Kathy. So Kathy and then, yeah, and then, like I said, if Linda's in here, Linda was of the same thing, like I said, she, she's all for it on the outside of town so that people don't have to drive downtown and clog up our roads to get some of these services. So she got that, right? All right. So now the second part of my ask is about the city manager performance review process. So I pretty much heard from everybody and heard pretty much a majority kind of liking the process I proposed. And again, I'm not married to this process. I just want to have a process that's a little bit more formal, if you will, than we've done in the past. We're a bigger city than we used to be. The performance reviews in the past were kind of semi-informal. And you're looking at the city manager in Tuolton is the chief executor, executive of a, if you will, an organization that's a multimillionaire budget and hundreds of employees. So their performance review process in my mind should be semi-formal or a little bit more formal than we have. I don't want it to be onerous. I don't want it to take hours. It might take a little longer this first time, but going forward in the future, once we have the form done and the process done, I think it'd be fairly easy to complete. In my discussions with Sherilyn, she's fine with the questions that are in there. The one question was on the outside partner evaluations. If someone doesn't respond, does the HR person have to hunt that person down? In my mind, no. No, you send it out, you give them a timeframe, maybe remind them once and they'll get back to you. That's fine. And then the process of gathering information or feedback from outside partners and Sherilyn's direct reports give us more information about the things that Sherilyn does terrifically that we might not be aware of, the day-to-day operations, how she runs the organization that we have no clue that she's doing. Because our interaction with Sherilyn is different than what she has with staff and outside partners. So it'd be good to hear nice, of course, compliments of Sherilyn, what she's doing and how she's advocating for the city and put that into a performance review and acknowledge her for that. So I don't want to take up a lot of time at the council advance. I think it's a half hour right now allocated.
Just talk about process.
Just talk about process. Long story short, we'd like to review those questions, make sure they're valid, make sure Stacy says they're legit, Sean says they're legal, inside the performance review. Come up with a, you know, the steps, I had the 10 steps, doesn't have to be all 10, we can tweak that. And then we'd be Stacy coordinating it as our HR director. We'd probably have one or two executive sessions and it'd be done. The way Tiger does it is the city council sits down in a executive session, completes the review, has one voice. So the boxes are filled out and it's, you know, it's unanimous and what goes in those boxes as far as review and the rating, rather than having seven different viewpoints or seven types of feedback. And they have found that's been very helpful to Marty and for their city councilors. So just looking at if people want to do it or against it. I know Paul's not wild about it and Paul sent me some emails acknowledging he's not wild about it. Go ahead.
Again, there are, there are, there are two camps and I live GE and there, this type of evaluation. And I also though have know of several friends of mine who are executives of large corporations and what I was moving to in my last, and it's been a long time since I've worked, but as the head of a commercial finance group, you know, we had slowly migrated over to basically you're always under review. The performance, you're having a performance review, our retreats, our council advances, our performance reviews on what Sherilyn's doing. And then periodically a self-evaluation and then just an assessment. And that's where you get the unanimous yes or no. The rest of this, in my mind, and I know Frank, you said we're a big city, but last time I checked, you're not being paid, but the mayor of Tiger is being paid.
That's true.
And so I would put that in perspective as well in terms of what the trend is in terms of performance reviews and where the world is going to and, you know, the best practices for us in terms of the fact that this is a volunteer board and, you know, my, all of our times is important. And yes, it's important. And the flip side is I have a hard time arguing with a lot of your points because as you so eloquently stated, you're, you know, you're Marines?
Army.
Army.
Marines.
Sorry, I, I got, listen, I got, I got, I got a cousin who was in the Navy, a cousin was in the Air Force, my uncle was in the Air Force, my dad was in the Army. I, I was trying to get, I'm sorry. I won't forget. But yes, so where, where our lens is coming from is how we probably vision this. And so I'm, as I said, it's, it's not, you know, I just would like to get this done quickly and I'd like it to be done efficiently. And I already know the amazing job that Sherilyn is doing because I talk to her every other week and I see her at these meetings and I see her at the, at the advances and the work that she and her amazing staff does with respect to the city. So that, that was.
Yeah, no, I, that's perfectly sound. I just, the one thing I, and I don't want to be a doomsday person here, we're all seeing what's going on sometimes in other cities with city managers being let go or, and stuff like that. And my wife's HR person and sometimes those things get nasty and first thing lawyers ask for is performance reviews. And I'd rather have something on paper that's more formal that we can have, not that we're going to do that, to Sherilyn anytime soon. Yeah, yeah. She and I already had this discussion. It's just, it's just a matter of protecting, protecting the city. And then it's also a helpful thing for Sherilyn that one day, I mean, I said to her that, you know, a dream city manager position comes open for her.
Here.
Somewhere, yeah. But it's also, it's also good for folks to have something like that in their portfolio. When, I mean, there'll be one day when we're all gone and Sherilyn says, you know, I've been a city manager for 30 years, I might want to move on. That she has this in her portfolio. So, nah, I'm getting there. So you gotta be, it's both sides. You gotta be on it because you also want, you know, people to succeed in our organization too. So, so people okay with, we'll keep it short and sweet at the advance. If you haven't had a chance, refresh yourself on the 10 steps and be able to say, hey, I don't like this question or can we tweak this? One of the questions Sherilyn does have, which is valid, is who really are our outside partners we should talk to? You know, back in the day, Allison Andrews would pick up the phone over at Marion Park Hospital, but she's gone. So is the hospital really a good person to talk to? Maybe it's just the city managers she works with day-to-day and maybe not employers or maybe it's just Linda. So ideas like that we'll bring together because again, I want to keep this streamlined and not send an email out with a performance review to somebody who's not going to answer it, or we have no clue it is, or that Sherilyn doesn't really deal with. Yeah.
Right interaction.
Other things. Okay. Anything else?
You should be.
Yeah. More than acknowledge of retirement. Get that good work.
Yeah. All right. Someone's got a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Got a motion, a second for adjournment. Any discussion of motion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Good night. Make sure I have the right meeting for that one too. Because it looks like mine didn't download.
Do you like my paper copy?
I got it. I know we're going to be calling the Tuolton Development Commission. Let me go here.
Yes, please.
I was wondering why Don was hanging out and stuff. All right, let's go ahead and call in the session, the January 27th, 2020 Tuolton Development Commission meeting. Call the orders done. Public comment? Anyone in the chamber who would like to just talk about anything about the Tuolton Development Commission that is now on the agenda? You can do so now. It's limited to three minutes. I have no one signed up. Anyone want to come forward? No, thank you. Consent agenda. Tonight we have a consent agenda with a few items on it. This consent agenda, we act with one vote. I'll ask council to see if there's anyone who wishes to remove any items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration separately. If you wish to have an item removed, please let me know when I go through this. Item number one, consideration of approval, the Tuolton Development Commission meeting minutes of January 13th, 2020. Item number two, consideration of resolution number 616-20 of the Tuolton Development Commission approving of an annual financial report fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes unanimously for commissioners?
Especially when it's getting tired, yeah.
There's no commissioner comments in this agenda, so we'll skip that. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second to adjourn this commission meeting. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, good night.
Thank you.
You deserve a cavalry.